Who's only part time. But I unfortunately do not have even like his number to text him for additional tech support tonight.
Can you hear me now? Can you guys hear me?
Recording in progress.
Alright, again, Jim. Try your audio again, Jim.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm hearing you on my computer. It's not you.
Can you guys hear me in the room too?
A little muffled.
Or is it just through Ken's computer?
I've got you working on my computer.
Okay, yeah, people online are chatting in saying that they can hear me through the Zoom. So if you guys can hear me okay through Ken's computer, guess we can proceed.
Yeah, I'm hearing her through our Zoom. So everybody's audio is working, but our audio broadcast of the Zoom in the room here, we're not putting it out through the amplifier here.
And the volume is very low going through Ken.
Is there an extra microphone that you could put on Ken's computer?
Could you repeat that, Jim?
Yeah, is there an extra microphone that we could put on your computer, Ken?
Other than broadcasting through the room, it's gonna echo.
Right.
I guess if I, if none of us talk, it would work.
Maybe not.
Yeah, it would work except for we made noise. Can you mute us, David? No, I mean, can you mute us? I mean, I can mute. I'm muted. That's the house mic. Can you mute us in Zooms? I'm muted, but I'm talking about the panelists.
Is there a phone, like a speakerphone in the room that I could call into?
Give us a minute.
They assume you want me to use your cellphone? Jen?
Yeah, sure.
Say yes.
Okay.
Alright, can you hear me?
Much better.
Now it's really echoing for me.
Yeah, you gotta turn your audio off. Listen to your phone. Yeah, it'll go right into this mic and.
Okay, can you hear me? Can someone in there speak?
Sure, how's this?
That's good. Let me turn my volume way up. Try again.
I'm talking right a little bit into the mic. Okay.
Okay, good. And you can hear me?
I'm hearing you.
Okay. Yes, we can.
Okay, I think we got it.
Do you want me to finish the report?
Please.
Okay, so that was it. No, actually, there was one more thing. Commissioner Brown had asked, since it has been entirely too long since your last public hearing, from when you're gonna actually see the minutes for the June 8th meeting, I am gonna actually send those out to the board tomorrow. So you've got a little bit of time, an extra week. And you'll see those same minutes again in your packet that goes out next Thursday for the June 8th meeting.
Is it necessary to have minutes, wait until there's a meeting or there's a public hearing? We have a scheduled meeting in the quorum here. Can't we do the minutes? So two weeks later and then two months later?
We could possibly do that. It's just that we have to, we have to open a regular meeting. I need to make sure that they're noticed as part of a regular meeting and then you adjourn into a work session. So it's just a matter of mechanics, but I could potentially make that happen for you all. But anyhow, like I said, my plan is to send them out, so you have a little extra time with them before the June 8th meeting. And at the June 8th meeting, we've got one public hearing item. And that's our conditional use permit with a preliminary site plan. So that's where we are. Oh, and possibly a work session on S T R is depending on what happens on June 1st. Jen?
Yeah, I can't hear you guys very well, but I'm gonna go ahead and get going.
Thank you. Jen, if you would like, you could listen on the Zoom audio and turn the audio down on your phone. And we'll just hear you through the mic on your phone and you'll hear us through the speakers on your computer. If you can work that out. Jeff, turn the volume down on your phone where you can't hear us through your phone. And turn the volume back up on the Zoom meeting. And you'll be able to hear us better because each one of our mics is going straight to Zoom. Where it's only picking it up through your phone, which is clear on the other side of the room when we're talking without this in. But you'll have to make sure your phone audio is offered. It's gonna feedback to us.
Okay, I'll toggle between the mutes. I think that's what you're basically saying. So I think I got them. Alright, and you can see my screen, it looks like.
Yes.
So what we have done is taken that use table that Karen sent out to you all. It's been a little while now, maybe a couple of weeks. And we cross-reference that against the definitions work that we've already done. We haven't made any specific changes over here on the right or on the left column yet, but we have notes over on the right that help us get there. So what we really wanted to do today was just look down the list of uses and not, as you can see, I've hidden the Ps and Cs and all of the allowances. We wanted to focus on the actual uses for today. And then we can come back in, we can clean this up and we can start to look at the actual allowances across the different sound districts. Does that work for everybody?
Uh, yeah.
Let's go forward.
And then on the right-hand side of my screen is the actual use standards chapter. I thought I'd keep this up so we can, if we have any questions on what standards are already in the code, we can kind of toggle back and forth here and see what they are. So looking down the list, sensory dwelling unit, we didn't have any specific notes on. Clustered residential development, we did have some discussion on. I think we might need to change that title. In the definitions, we had two single-family dwellings in the use table. We only had one, so that's not a change that will need to be made in the use table. And also, Larry, as I go, do you want me to bring up your ideas or do you wanna insert them?
What are you most comfortable with, Jen?
Okay, why don't I just kind of go through these residential uses? We'll kind of look at them in chunks and then we can kind of discuss all of the ones in this in this chunk and then we'll go down to the next category. We have discussed in our definitions discussion, but we wanted to add a mixed-use category for residential. And Karen and I will still have to work on the manufactured, but so we may have to change those out a little bit based on what we end up with for definition. So are there any questions about kind of that crosswalk with the definitions to the uses? And are there any residential uses that we feel we're missing or that we don't need?
I can certainly go through my list with residential. And first of all, I ask that we include the words units or project for each of those uses. Because we may be talking about a separate unit or we may be talking about a separate project, would we be a subdivision plan or something like that? So I suggest that we use the word units and projects to distinguish between what we're talking about. And that would, and that would mean that the clustered residential development would become a project. We'd add a clustered residential units. You've already mentioned the dwellings for one family. One of those needs to be changed to two-family dwellings. Also, that we have dwelling, single-family attached townhomes and condominiums projects. We have that listed. I don't even see that on the board anymore, but there used to be information regarding those dealing with townhomes and condos. And then add dwelling, single-family attached townhome condo units. Add back, we used to have the apartment building complex on a single project, single lot project. Add that back in. As well as add the apartment unit. I think that was important because we needed to make a distinction between condos and townhomes, which are usually purchased units, which the apartment units are typically rental units. Also suggested that we look at the dwelling, manufacturing, not on permanent foundation. And put in rest of these mobile home to deal detached unit. And the last two are add a manufactured home park project and add a mobile home park existing. And I think that would cover all the all the residential dwellings that I have.
Larry, help me out here. The items you're saying to add back that were more like the project items, where were those before?
They were in the existing code.
In the table? Not in the table, but in the code?
In the code, yes.
But they weren't in the table. I mean, this table that's in that document online is not revised yet, right? I didn't bring my book, I should probably.
Karen, do you want me to share? My toggling wasn't working very well. Do you want me to bring that, Larry's notes over to the screen so everyone can see that?
Sure.
To answer Ken's question, does anybody have a copy of the current code in front of them?
We can sort this up electronically.
I thought I did when I pulled up the Envato version, the section four with the use table. Is that not current? Or is it?
And it was rolled before April 1st.
In looking at your list, Larry, I think you've got some things in here that are like a subset of a use and don't necessarily, shouldn't necessarily appear as an individual line item. Like an apartment unit, in my mind, that's one apartment, one dwelling unit within an apartment building. So apartment building on a single lot project, that terminology does show up in our rules now. So I think there's some.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think there's some additional work that needs to happen there to finesse back and forth between those items. So that's my concern with some of what you have flagged. I mean, it's good for us to cross-reference those, but I don't know that they're necessarily a use that should appear.
I guess what I would suggest you go through that list and see how they can be merged with the existing definitions. And if, in your opinion, need to be brought forward, that's fine if they don't, that's fine to do.
Okay. Did you catch that, Jen?
Yes, I did. And I agree with Karen. Some of those are more the way the building is used and you need to look at what type of building you're permitting.
Exactly.
Alright, are there any other thoughts on this one as a group? Are we in agreement on adding? Or just any other discussion on kind of this unit versus project? And I think maybe that's part of what you just addressed, Karen, but I just wanted to make sure where we're at on that.
Yeah, in my opinion, apartment unit should not appear on the list. And then we also definitely need to look at cluster residential units or cluster residential development. I'm not sure which one was in the use table to start with. And that's also one of those.
It was not the use table, it was listed as a separate special use called, called, called residential. But it's called Cluster Development in the reference by 1833.
No, I know it appears elsewhere and I said that what I haven't ever sorted out is how that intertwines with the the rest of the system.
What I was thinking right now is, is that a separate, is that a separate use or it's a, it's
I can.
What it is, what it is, it's, it's single-family residential with different rules about how you group them on the, how you lay out the lots.
Or the development project, yes.
Yeah, it's more a different layout concept.
More like single-family, but it says the rules are different as to how you space.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's why I had cluster residential units. Those units would fit only in a cluster development project.
Okay, the bottom line is we need to look at that holistically again. So thank you for driving that.
Your current code does listed as clustered residential development and it says can't quite get the whole table up on my computer here. It's listed in two different zone districts, S R and U R.
Clustered will never. Cluster will never go in a U R because you don't have spaces, impossible. Might as well get rid of it and just take it out, U R.
Take which one out. I'm sorry, I'm trying to send.
Has, has open space set aside, then you could put it closer, but there's, there's nothing like anywhere in the city where you are in the U R zone that could ever, could ever possibly let a cluster residential development fit in.
I said, I definitely need to go back and look at that concept. It's one of those terms that can potentially have different meanings depending upon the jurisdiction and what they set it out to do. So I really can't dive into more details on that, I'm sorry. And for the record, the email I'm sending is to the help desk people to like adjust or deal with this issue so it doesn't happen at our next meeting. So my apologies.
Alright. Are we ready to move on to group living and lodging? It's a pretty short category. Okay.
I would, I'd rather have somebody else talk before I begin.
Alright. Okay. In group living and lodging, we didn't have any changes to the term bed and breakfast. Care facility, I know we talked about, we had residence care home. There was quite a discussion on this and you guys might remember that because I think that was in our last meeting or one of the more recent meetings. So we have residence care home and care facility and we need to potentially combine the two or even create. I think the conversation was those two could be combined and what I don't know is do we need another use to replace either of them or do they combine and still work together? And I think.
Are they the same allowances in the, in the use zones? Are they different? Is there something specifically different in the table? I'll see through. In your spreadsheet.
And if care facility here in the chat shown is the conditional use in M F S and M F U and then several commercials on, if it's conditioned, if the only use, only places for any kind of care facility or nursing home or residence, they're all conditional use. Makes it less critical trying to predefine the exact, some exact variations between them.
I think there is a distinction. One, if you recall, we did an amendment to the code several months ago talking about the residential care homes. Was that, was that the provision we were dealing with?
That was family daycare homes.
Oh, family there.
Yeah, the, yeah, basically childcare. The residence care home, group living, also sometimes termed a group home. That actually has some protections in Colorado statute that we need to be cognizant of in terms of where those are located. A care facility that falls definitely more into that category of whether it's assisted living, nursing home, memory care, those types of things fall under that category.
Yeah, they're distinctly different zones where they're currently conditionally allowed, so that's, they're intended to be different. I don't think we should combine them.
Well, clearly, the one, the residence care home, the statutory one, that's different one. That has, has to be at least provisions that could be in a an S R or a U or district.
Yeah, could be.
Yeah, I believe that's how that is prescribed. I have to go back and read the statute. It's been a while since I've had to deal with one.
I thought, I thought there were two different uses.
But I was referring to, not that one, all the other kinds of variations you could have, whether you call it a rest home, nursing home, convalescent, convalescent home, but.
Right.
We could try and make a slight difference between one, the slightly larger one can be in and C, but C, it'd be very hard to draw the lines.
And what were you wanting to draw the line between again?
No, I'm just trying to say, we have, we talked about lots of different kinds of care facilities. Other than, other than the one, this residence care home group. They all, they all get grouped together as a conditional use, which is, I was suggesting as good as it gets because we don't want my definition to try and separate out each category.
I would agree with that. Yeah, that the, that those, that the care facility probably is a good comprehensive term. And that's where we look back at the definition related to care facility. It may in fact include those other, you know, terms, you know, that, you know, sometimes includes, you know, the following.
Yeah, now that I'm looking at this again, Karen, you're right. And typically, we would just call that, post one on line 19, the last one there, we typically just call that a group home. And it is, there are statutory protections for those. And it's different than your care facility. Your care facility, like you said, here is replacing kind of the nursing home, convalescent home, that type of thing. The group home is, there's a couple of different limits. They're small and large and they are to house a variety of different folks. But it's different than your kind of quote-unquote nursing home or residential, residential care facility.
The licensing and use may be different as well.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
Very different.
So that's why I suggest we have to.
Any other thoughts on the lodging section, group living or lodging section?
Did we?
Other than adding charter metals, I see that one, Larry, that's a good one.
Did we keep the separate definitions of lodges and ends, motels, hotels and suites? Those, because those differ just in number of rooms. We put them all together in a group here, so there's no reason to separately define them anymore. Motel, hotel now picks up lodges and ends and motels and hotels and then we have two different definitions. They vary only because of the number of rooms, was it above or below 20 or whatever the number was. I was saying, part of looking at this is we've got extra definitions unless we've got a reason to say one can, one of them can, you know, and can't be in a particular zone.
I was gonna say, the only thing it seems to be doing is saying if a bed and breakfast type establishment has 11 rooms, it's now an inn. And it goes into the hotel motel category instead of the bed and breakfast category?
Yeah, I wasn't even separating, I was leaving bed and breakfast as an up to 10 room. The hotel, motels and lodges and ends are two separate ones, larger than that.
I know. I know.
So. Part of the use is going through this this thing here, let's take a look and say, ah, we've identified, we apparently have duplicative definitions. Don't separate them by size, lodges, hotels, motels, lodges, just one thing.
And that would be my take on this, bed and breakfast oftentimes show up in different zones and more. Back before Airbnb, you know, somebody had a large historical home. That was typically what you would see is like the the bed and breakfast. With the 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 caretakers living on site and operating the bed and breakfast. And so that's why you typically see a smaller number of rooms associated with. The onsite operator, you know, the person that lives there, that that provides lodging and then of course breakfast in the morning. And then with regard to the difference between lodges and ends and motels, hotels and suites. In my mind, those by today's standards really are kind of all one thing. So that's that's how that would shake out. And yes, we do ultimately need a definition for short term rentals. Hopefully that gets ironed out here in the coming months so that we've got something clear that gets put in there. As well as what zone district it should go in. So so, yeah, there is the potential that some of those definitions we've gone through and looked at can potentially be struck and then. With, you know, if we are striking lodges and ends to go back and. Just verify that the the definition for motels, hotels and suites is comprehensive enough that we're we're comfortable that it takes all that in.
I just noticed that there are twenty rooms or less for lodges and ends and I thought, well, maybe that's a separate distinction.
And I'm trying to recall back to that conversation and we might have at that time been speculating that that. Tied back to some of the more historical aspects that might have been in existence here in Woodland Park. You know, as to why that even was separated out like that once upon a time, but I don't know that we have anything like that anymore. And then the other piece, if I'm remembering correctly, was just the economic viability of somebody trying to operate at only that that level of room. That financially, I don't know that that's a sound business model.
And I just suggested putting the short term rentals in this section because it is relodging use. We put that under hold, just as a holding where she go.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right, so for now, I'm hearing hotel motel just stays, we are not going to break out lodges and in. Okay. Great, any other thoughts on the group living and lodging section?
So the only other, the only other thing that I wanted to loop back on was in our definitions, we. We voted to let one go, so I agree with some of Larry's notes about we need to. Finalize something there. Because they have for care facility removed based on duplicates. And so when you go back, we've got the residential one there, so I don't know if we want to clean that up a little bit based on your recommendation.
I'll just make a note here that I'll probably argue on the short term rental. That. Depending on how it comes to somebody for zoning, most likely what's built is a residence. In the residential zone. And it's a residence that we're talking about and it's a use of that preexisting residence. There's possibility somebody's going to come and say, I want to build a short term rental, but not likely, they're going to say, I want to build a townhome. A house, whatever, and then they're going to come in and say, can I get a license to have an STR? In this house or cabin or whatever, it's probably residential use. Like, I don't know.
Well, it's it's still. What you're describing is still in use. The whether the bill, whether the building is what it is, if somebody puts in. An iron foundry or he puts in a short term rental, you have to look and see what.
I mean, you got the same argument on the group living, right? It's probably a residence that they're going to put five people. Maybe in there with a caretaker. So it could be residents too, so I'm just saying that I think it might need to be discussed a little bit, which.
I agree.
Okay. For future.
It could be because I agree with Ken, because I know that we've had conversations with people looking to build and we're like, oh, are you going to do this? So there's always the possibility, so maybe just bookmark it. When we get better.
Okay, future discussion, but it needs to be in here somewhere because. It it's a it's a function of something, it's a use that somebody's using something for.
Yeah.
This is the use table, what are the acceptable uses, where can you use them? So I'm okay with that.
All right, moving on to agriculture. We did have a couple of comments on this one. Farming and ranching was one that was new to the table, that wasn't on your original table, just to, but we didn't have any comments on that in the. In the definitions chapter. We did have. Nursery, we didn't have any comments in the definitions, but it was originally called plant nursery. And I know Larry, you have in your notes talked about changing it back to maybe plant nursery and greenhouse.
Yeah.
I just wanted to talk about that one.
I just wanted to make a distinction between a childcare nursery and a plant nursery. Because if you use the same word nursery for both those uses, it might be confusing.
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? Do you want to change this one to plant nursery and greenhouse?
Did we change that in the definitions though?
Yeah, I think we need to like re-read the definition. Because we did massage that and what I'm not recalling is whether or not we were referring to a commercial greenhouse. Which in my mind is potentially a preferred term.
Just, I'm just looking for clarification.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm glad you flagged it.
So the current definition is. Need land or greenhouse used to raise flowers, shrubs and plants for sale. Under just nursery.
Right, but what's we.
Do we need orchard in there?
What did we massage that to?
So we did, we did change it to greenhouse commercial.
Okay.
We took out for personal enjoyment and we added it, we wanted to add it back into the use table. So yeah, it does say greenhouse commercial based on the notes that I have and what we've done.
Okay. So I would suggest that's what that, how that needs to appear here, yeah.
Might get a.
Well, that was actually for greenhouse. We also have this used nursery and a greenhouse and a nursery are very different. I mean, greenhouse is a part of nurseries typically. So I think you're going to want to have. A nursery as a use and then greenhouse can still be defined as we have. Define as as you had just mentioned, the way that we're changing it.
Yeah, because under nursery, we had added. Vertical farming or micro was the only other thing. We changed out the plants and added nursery. Just have a nursery.
The document is open somewhere here. Okay. Sorry, we've we've made an edit to the definition chapter, so I was trying to open up the latest version.
I've also suggested that we add agricultural and garden sales, move that from retail sales category. And put it under agricultural mention. And I also suggested that. You can see on my list there we have agricultural slash ranching. Ranching is probably more historically correct in our area. And agricultural from this.
Do we want to take Ken's suggestion and add orchard in both?
Your mic's not on, Sean.
It's hard to. So I was trying not to. Plus, my mouth is big enough, I figured. Did you hear that, Jen? Jen, did you hear my suggestion?
Yes, I did, but can you please repeat it? I forgot you guys can't see my side of the bar, so I wouldn't make a guess.
That's okay, I was trying not to turn mine on because I've got two others right next to me, so I was trying to be loud enough. But Ken had made the suggestion about also having add orchard. And so I think that might, we should see that flow through both the definition and through the table.
Okay, so we want to add orchard as a new use?
No, no, it's just part of nursery and other agriculture uses in with one of the others.
Yes.
Just to make sure it's.
Also farming.
I I know, but it's slightly different.
And very visionary in the world of climate change, because right now I don't think we could have a viable.
A state where they have been on these different watermelons, things and things that grow at different climates, so I'm still hopeful that I'm going to get a. Peach tree that will grow here.
Yeah, some cows down.
Yes.
Well, if you do get it, you got to keep the beer out of it.
Oh, that's not a problem. I'll I'll protect it if I can get peaches.
I don't want to see in the newspaper now.
So again, I recommend moving agricultural and garden sales to agricultural slash ranching. Instead of retail sales.
Are we looking at the kind of these zones for these residential, commercial, industrial?
I hope.
No, we were looking more at terminology, yeah.
You wanted to move agricultural agricultural and gardening sales to the agricultural area?
Correct.
For agriculture, I don't think so, it's still a retail establishment.
Keep keep it a retail?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I mean. It's just a different kind of retail. I would think.
If we're probably not necessarily excluding somebody selling the apples they're growing on their orchard on the side of the road.
Yeah.
We could seek it out there. But there's a little basket.
I've also recommended that we add community gardens under this section. As well as chicken coops, domestic fowl and beehives.
Do you think there's ever a chance we're going to have a composting? Facility or compost, joint composting areas or anything like that where people bring stuff for composting? I mean, it's been discussed on some of my projects in other parts of the country.
Trends in other parts of the country, yes.
Yeah, you know, we're, it's like, oh, we should have a community composting thing as part of our facility and they can bring stuff and. And come get the compost for gardens and things, you know, I don't know that that's a big deal here, but.
Bears would love that.
But it would be something you definitely want to control where you put it.
We can actually buy. Up from the wastewater treatment.
Right. It's free there too.
Yeah. You can get the city manufactured. Yeah, you and I all.
So the other thing to be careful of as we talk about these uses is. Primarily the use table is for principal uses, so what is the primary use on the property? Occasionally you end up with a use listed that really is accessory to a primary use. But my experience has been that the use table is not where you go into like all those accessory uses. The example being like chicken coops. There's very specific criteria that have to be met right now if you wanted to have. You know, six chickens at at your house, there's, and I don't remember what the limitations are, but there's, there are specific standards to that. And like I said, I'm, this is where I don't have our current rules memorized, to even know if it's listed individually in the news table or not. So that's just a thought as we sort through things.
My my thought was that urban agriculture is a growing use. And we ought to be able to encourage that.
I agree with Larry on the growing use, but I think it's also an accessory to most operations, you have a beehive in your backyard. It's a residential use with an accessory. Even with a chicken coop would also be accessory to the primary residency, so I don't think it needs to be addressed in the news table.
Right.
And maybe as permitted accessory uses somewhere, but not as a principal. Several paragraphs on chicken coops when they use, we use regulations.
So I'll throw this out while we're talking agricultural too, vertical farming is going on now too, you know. Growing herbs and greens and stuff in building. So that they can have. Fresh produce close to cities and urban areas that don't have a lot of farmland and or seasonal. You know, you can't grow it in the winter, so you you get fresh. Whatever they grow in there in the winter because they grow year round, so. That not not likely to come to our area, but it's coming around the country in different places, so.
We said it certainly could.
We can put it in there as another agricultural use or industrial use.
I was going to ask, is that a use or a production method?
Well, it's. It's a new industry, so if you're talking about different, it does, it's an industrial. Facility typically, they build it and grow it for commercial purposes to sell. Wholesale or maybe retail, slightly wholesale.
There is a procedure laid out in the planning ordinance today. It says if something comes in which doesn't fit in any 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 district. You come to the planning department and they'll evaluate, decide where it fits in. And do we, we create, we imagine, how about a space launch? I mean.
Yeah, you're right, let's keep going, we could go forever.
Yeah. If if no one's come up with one and it's sort of obscure and there's no reason to think it. I don't think we necessarily need to figure out all the possibility and exactly where it might go and we don't even know what it could look like.
And I do have to say right now, if somebody came in and said, hey, I want to do this vertical farming operation. I would, like the conversation we're having here, would talk to them about what does this look like, you know, is it indoor, outdoor, square footage? Footprint impact, water use, you know, all those kind of things and from there. Look at it, does it fit within that other category of like a plant nursery, but it's just inside an enclosed building?
Similar.
Yeah, so I said that that's. You know, kind of how how planter brains are are trained in terms of, does this fit with one of these unless it's otherwise specifically called out? And sometimes things don't fit with anything and and then like you guys said, we do have a process that.
It would be a manufacturing or something kind of like that. That uses plant growth as the product, they grow plants and manufacturing. Whatever they grow in there. Usually herbs and spices and some greens, maybe lettuce and stuff.
And for what it's worth, on on the eastern plains, we did have a commercial greenhouse that grew tomatoes. And the locals all referred to it as the tomato factory.
Okay, that's worth moving on.
I was going to say, because it's also opens up the can of worms with hydroponic plants that grow vegetables hydroponically in a warehouse, so.
Same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
Which I said, is that a production method?
Right, exactly, because they also raise fish that way too.
You know, and I think as we think as planners, you know, we we need to think about what's on, what's happening now. What could be happening, what was likely, so we can try to be.
We've got more uses than we have acres, I can tell you that. Right now, so. Probably don't have to worry about too many. Are we going to acquire any more city anytime soon, Catherine? Okay.
I don't want to delay for this one, but I do want to bring up, you guys have had a great conversation there, and the only thing. That kind of makes me want to put, I know we, we define commercial greenhouse versus private greenhouse in the definitions. I kind of like to add or propose that we add commercial greenhouse to the use table. Because the one thing that's different with vertical farming and those types of things, if, if they're done in a greenhouse, it's the lighting. So if it's in a warehouse, you don't have any light emission, but if you're in a greenhouse. You may want to have some standards that control the light emission out of that glass box. Um, at certain times of the day. Just have food for thought.
So I guess.
All right.
I, I guess I'm okay with striking chicken coops and beehives. And look at them as being accessory uses and we're gonna be talking about that later on, too.
Accessory to residential?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we have been adding beehives to a lot of codes lately, um, typically are adding them as an accessory use. Uh, but there are specific standards that you might want to apply with those, uh, just to, for safety reasons and whatnot. All right, do I move on to, oh wait, we have stable and commercial and private, and there weren't really any. Um, comments other than I think we had talked about. Nope, there weren't any definition comments on those, sorry. Um, do we want to move on to commercial office?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, let me start with, um, kennels, so we have a commercial and a private kennel. And we had just changed those originally from kind of longer terminology. And there weren't any comments in the, um, definitions on those. Uh, pet shop and grooming, I seem to recall that we did talk about these a little bit in the definitions. Maybe I'm thinking of another code, um, but this was added as a new use, so are there any changes we need to make to that? And the veterinary facility, um, is pretty straightforward as well, so. And I see Larry didn't know any comments in any of those, any of those either.
Surprise.
Uh, the next section is food, and there were some comments on this that we had during our definition. So we had talked about. Uh, for splitting up the brew pub, distillery and winery. So we've shown those here, adding distillery pub, um, and limited winery and keeping brew pubs separate. Grocery store is the other one that we had talked about, um, we have grocery store now and supermarket, and we talked about just making those grocery stores small and large. And applying that specific, um, size to define each of them. And then I know we had some discussion on restaurant with the drive-in versus, um, with and without drive-in. Just changing that terminology, um. And I see Larry has a, a little list of comments here, changing the section to safe food, eating and drinking. And I will say, in, in some codes, we're changing this section to eating and drinking establishment, so just food for thought again. Larry, you want to go through your suggestion?
Yeah, I, I, again, I would. You hit that on the nail, that we expand food to eating and drinking. It all kind of fits out into those categories instead of just food. I had a question on the grocery store supermarket size, are we talking about the lot size or the building size?
Building size. Something.
I thought so, too. That wasn't square feet above or below, I think.
By building size.
Okay. That's just a question. I also suggested in the section that we add convenience store and not get into whether you repair trucks or not. And farmer's market, we're dealing with food in there. And it's just maybe because I grew up in the Midwest and I, I see a distinction between, and we talked about this before. Drive-in and drive-through facilities and services. The drive-in to me is something like the Sonic.
Right, where you're driving and park.
Right. And a drive-through is like McDonald's where you. You're still in your car. You order.
I don't think our intent was to make a difference. If, if people are driving cars up. Other than just park and go in. It's, doesn't have a drive-through. If, if they've got, you know, the other kind, Sonic and McDonald's are both drive-ins.
No, McDonald's is not a drive-in. That's a drive-through. You go, you go to a win.
Was that what our discussion was making the difference, the where, because somebody brought up the difference in and through. Remember?
Yeah, I know, we talked about it, but. It, it.
One word.
The drive-up window, drive-in or drive-through, I don't think we care.
From a playing perspective, what's the difference because the drive-through where you have a stacking lane to get service out of window?
Right.
Is the concern Sonic has both, if you're just pulling up the park. Versus, and then food delivered here. Are versus.
But it's still a service to the window.
Right, and then, then that's a drive-through.
If it's. Drive-in and is that issue problem?
Farley. I think there's a distinction. I just wanted to revisit a little bit.
How does it affect our planning matrix?
It would just change from drive-in to drive-through food service potentially, who were, and nothing would change.
From a functional standpoint, I know what your real question is, functionally, are they both quacking like ducks is kind of what you're asking.
I think we came to this conclusion last time.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't need any additional distinction at this point, most likely.
And potentially where you run into problems and they ran into this in Santa Barbara, they had a Chick-fil-A. That even with a double drive-through lane was backing out onto the main street in the town.
Yeah.
And causing traffic jams. So, you know, that's kind of an issue. Whereas if it was a drive-in, you'd go and park. Cars would be able to still get in on the street usually. No, you're right, exactly the reason, those where the cars are queuing and such is considered to be a more intensive use. That it would be, in the example here, it might be in. CC and SC, whereas whether it's not drive-through could be in a neighborhood. Right. Exactly, you're exactly.
So I would still make the argument that we need to make the distinction between those two.
Yeah, I think through is more appropriate terminology.
Yeah, that's fine with me. It's more clear.
So, and I want to back up slightly, I, I'm very comfortable with rewording or retitling this section to eating and drinking. Uh, establishments, however, I would then suggest that grocery store and supermarket, which. In my mind, are kind of one in the same, those are actually retail sales points in my mind.
They should go, they should go. Even if the grocery store had a counter where you could eat a sandwich that was made in the place, because that would not.
Primary use is a retail.
Areas, right.
I agree with that. When I think food, I think restaurants and dining establishments and places that serve food or drinks, so.
Would you move convenience stores to there, too? To retail.
Convenience stores would be retail, too, primarily, even though you.
Right, you buy them.
Buy a takeout. But if a convenience store tells you that you can buy gas and you can go in and get a coat.
Right. But it's me, too. Kind of needing to drink this.
No, but I think convenience store that stands by itself.
We've been there and then a previous decision.
Okay.
They never revisited.
It's under retail. No, it's not.
It's not what we do.
Convenience stores under retail sales, personal services section. On this.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we're re- re-titling this eating and drinking establishments. And removing supermarket and grocery store, or grocery store, small and large, down to the retail section.
Don't forget drive-through.
And we'll change those to drive-throughs instead of drive-in.
Okay.
All right.
Is outdoor vending a zoning area or is it one of these temporary uses that's?
Um, I'm not recalling, um, do you have the definition of, of the outdoor vendor?
Yeah, because we talked about, like, if you wanted to purchase a bus pass or if they have sodas or if they had. Something in a vending machine outside.
I said, it's not a conversation, I, I started thinking about.
Use food trucks.
Yeah, our food trucks.
Yeah.
There's a couple right here.
It doesn't require the vendor permit in accordance with chapter eighteen point six two.
The way it's structured, outdoor vending is to find its out, is outdoor vendor operations require a vendor permit. All of it sounds like less like a zoning and more like a. Permitting process, the party of permit can be. Part of the permit will be you can park it.
And the table in the commercial zones and agricultural and.
If you want to park at the street in front of my house, hopefully.
U D is a dollar temporary use permit, T U P.
Well, I will say with that, you have to have a special permit to sell food in residential areas versus commercial areas, so. It's a little bit different that way.
But my, my question is, is that a zoning? Is that, is that a? Is that a use that's identified for zoning purposes or is it? Something else?
Well, by putting it in our table, we're saying it is by zoning.
Maybe, maybe, maybe whether it should or shouldn't, it doesn't hurt to be there, I suppose.
No, and it, um, and looking at the, the actual zone district end of things. Um, it does go back to our temporary use permits that we issue around those. And I would say the majority of the time, you know, yes, it is the food truck and, um, is. Um, there's a little pot of them that happen. That direction in town, but otherwise, a lot of times they're accessory to another business. There's a. A hot dog guy that likes to be at Woodland Hardware, Hardware, and there's a, a variety of.
Food truck likes to keep the food truck next to it.
Yeah, there's a variety that coming out from, from fireworks. There's a cheese, mac and cheese guy that's outside one of the liquor stores in the Banana Bill.
Yeah, so. I'm, I'm not really arguing either way, I just raised the question, it seemed to me it wasn't really necessarily for zoning, but. Look at the chart, they're all in a commercial. That's right, Dan makes the point to the table that says T U P. Under eat every zoning category, so it's meant to be. Yeah, yeah, they're not allowed in residential roles.
Yeah, and some of the objective here may so that it is that clear that, uh, no, you're not putting up the. The food truck at the, the end of the cul-de-sac for the summer.
Unless you're the ice cream guy and then.
They tend to keep moving.
Yeah, they, they move.
I also. Keeping out, preventing where it is, or do we want to move it down to a section on temporarys?
Uh, I, I don't know that I can, I can't, I can't answer that tonight. What do you guys think?
Okay.
Everybody's thinking, so let's.
I kind of know what it is, I don't really. Here if it shows up in this section or food or the other one down there, it's gonna be the same permitted uses with the temporary use permit, the same zones. Whether it's here or there. I don't think it makes any difference. Leave it in the food for now, that's where it was before. And I don't see any reason to change it. Unless they just have an objection to saying temporary use permit in a. Zoned area like this, and they need to be a temporary of it.
Well, this would be in addition to the use table, outdoor vending is not previously.
Always not previously in there, okay. So do we have a section that's just all temporary uses?
Eight, you pointed to eighteen sixty-two, you pointed earlier was referenced, it was, that's on temporary use.
Yeah, and so that's what Jen's asking, do we want to move it in there?
There's a miscellaneous, it's got several temporary use permit, only items like special events, art fairs, farmers markets, um. It could all be put under temporary use. Section. Either way.
If you're gonna. Or put them both under.
Temporary. Yeah.
Texting the outdoor vending, because it doesn't have to be food.
Right.
That's true.
True.
To be American flags and all, veterans events, it could be, I mean, a lot of things.
That's got to be something.
Catherine, since you're the only one here tonight, you want to come up to the dais, since we don't have a microphone for you down there. I'm highly confident Jen heard nothing that you just said.
I heard a little voice. Left it under accessories, you said, the structures and temporary uses right now, you know, you have like. Just re-intemporary. Two of which are outdoor vending and the other one is chicken coops or keeping it out. So just, just want to mention that, but we can reorganize them however.
Well, we just, you can look at.
Yeah.
Put it one place or the other.
Yeah, well.
But I agree with Catherine, we need to, it needs to be somewhere and it needs to stay one place or the other, not all over.
Yep.
Because we're trying to make it easier, not.
Right.
So. I feel good about having a section that says temporary use permit. Items and putting them all together. All the ones that.
On my last page of my notes, I, I suggest that as well.
Yeah. Oh, I'm just catching up with you, Larry.
And I'm also, I'm also going to give you a heads up. One call of accessory uses.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Yep.
But, uh, so if we, because outdoor vending could be food, it could be other things. And like you said, farmer's market, people sell things at farmer's markets that. Aren't necessarily food. So, we might as well. Put those all under temporarys. If, if that's their.
Okay.
Requirement, if, if everybody's okay with that, I'm leaning that way myself.
I'm good with that, too.
I am, too.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Okay, next one, I, I suggest that we think about adding traditional sit-down restaurants, and I know we had a long discussion about. With or without drive-through facilities. Um, I, I saw it listed. Um, where did I see that? Oh, it was part of the definition, actually. That is this traditional family selling food and drink for immediate consumption on premise.
Well, I think that disappeared, didn't it? It's just, if it's not a drive-through, if it's not a drive-through, it's a traditional family restaurant.
My.
Okay. Look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
I also suggest that we change, uh. Fast food, um, restaurants without a drive-in or drive, or drive-through and drive-in service. Because there are some fast food restaurants where you go up to the counter, you order your food. They tell you when your number's ready, and it's fast and it's great. And it's different than a, you, one of those other, so I, I'd want to introduce that, too.
My only thought about that would be, is it gonna have a different zoning consideration than the other restaurant with a drive-through or? Restaurant that's traditional family, that it wouldn't just be the exact same. Classifications where we would say could, uh, permitted or conditional use. In different zones, is there some distinction that we'd want to? Have a different spot where we'd say those would be permitted or conditionally permitted? I think you could handle it all under the same.
If you, I, I agree, if you park out front, walk inside, whether how long you stand at the counter.
Right.
Or do they have, or does the server give you to, that's getting really, for zoning purposes, it doesn't really even matter.
The hope is always that you get your food fast, but however, I, I've been stuck in line for quite a while sometimes, too, so. I think, oh, no, no, that's fine, I was gonna say, I just, I, I agree that if you're, if it's not a drive-through, it's a traditional family restaurant. Regardless of how quickly you get it.
So in the world of restaurants, there, I, I would recommend a distinction between, you know, just restaurants. Versus fast food, quick serve, um, and that may or may not have the, the drive-through, drive-in, whatever you want to call it. And part of the reason is you've got different performance standards that show up with the quick serve, fast food, specifically the stacking. Lane that you, you had talked about, you know, what is, what does that look like? And then, um. I'd have to check, but sometimes their parking needs may be different depending upon the volume of what they're. I'd have to check, but sometimes their parking needs may be different depending upon the volume of what they're potentially looking at.
If you have a fast food, quick service type restaurant, typically you're going to be turning spots faster than a traditional walk in, sit down restaurant.
Yeah, so the traffic volumes are a little different with each of them.
Parking spaces and traffic.
So there's.
Do we make a distinction currently among restaurants that aren't drive, that we called it drive in before, but wherever? We, we make it, is there any distinction in code now?
For what?
Between, between a, a traditional family restaurant and uh, without a drive through that's served more promptly than you might think of as a food.
I would have to look there.
There isn't one now, and so I would, we will create a new one.
Yeah, I would think like the donut mill. You go there, they have some biscuits and gravy and some donuts, but it's like fast food.
But it's also a sit down too.
But it's not really a traditional like, it's slightly different than Grandma's Kitchen.
Yes, you're not going to go there and sit for an hour.
You go to the counter, you order.
If we don't zone today, I wouldn't, I'm not sure we need to.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that
Distinction.
The traffic at that place is different than the traffic at Grandma's Kitchen.
Which is where I think in our current code, we do have the distinction of the restaurant with the drive through window, the restaurant without the drive through window. So the one without the window is the more traditional slower service, the one with the window is the faster turn.
But any of these, um, bakery, deli combo places, even the coffee houses are counter served. You go up, you order, you stand in line, you get it at the counter, you can walk out the door, go sit down if they have a table. But it's a fast, quick turn place. It could have a different requirement for parking, traffic, you know, whatever, pedestrian access than a sit down restaurant where you're going to be there for thirty-five to forty-five minutes, they bring the food to your table kind of thing. So I, I, I don't have an issue with having a distinction of a fast food or a.
I would say if someone could come up with a rationale, tell me what the distinction will be if there's some state difference we're going to make by ordinance between them.
I was throwing that out there by serving it at the counter versus serving it at a table.
I really think it boils down to the window and the traffic flow, quite honestly. Um, and Starbucks is a great example because the brand, there's some Starbucks where there's no window and then there's other ones where there is a window. And even then, um, you're potentially got people that are spending the day there, sipping coffee, working remotely. Or you get other people that are on the run, grab a cup and go. So it's, they're kind of all over the place. But in terms of if somebody from Starbucks is coming in wanting to cite another one, we're going to look at, is there a window or is there not? You know, for, for serving into a car and that triggers different requirements in terms of the site layout and, and vehicle circulation. So I think that's probably more the real issue for us than the, the zone districts in which they're located. Uh, there may be a little bit of a distinction, um, in terms of, uh, fast food, um, definitely being more oriented towards, um, the highways and, um, a more leisurely restaurant. Maybe be a little more comfortable and slightly further away from that perhaps maybe.
So, so Lee, mine would be drive through is a typical type of restaurant that has a drive through window. Uh, the second kind would be a fast food restaurant where you get waited on at a counter, you don't get waited on at a table, and then a traditional restaurant where you're waited on at a table versus a counter.
And, and if there's, if someone identifies some material distinction zoning that I will treat it differently, then I agree with it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if you zone it differently, but I'm just saying too, you could distinguish them that way.
Slice it to make any difference that you can't put one in a neighborhood commercial.
I agree.
Versus a community commercial.
So the, the current code has fast food restaurant means an establishment whose principal business is the sale of prepared, pre-prepared or rapidly prepared food directly to the consumer and are ready to consume. That's basically what you're saying. So we already have that definition. So if you really wanted to just make you feel better, you could put fast food slash drive through. Or, and just leave it as it, the definition as it is. Or just leave it alone as it, and then you have traditional family restaurants, which is an establishment that generally provides a full service menu and that prepares food after menu items are ordered and served food. So those are the two current definitions right now, and I think we're just making it more.
As long as there's just two, I don't care what you call them.
I'm okay with that too.
So we can leave it fast food and, and whatever Ken wants, fast food slash, and then he'll be happy.
Yeah, so I will be. I, if there's only two sets of zoning difference, I mean, there's only one zone that's different. It's a neighborhood commercial, right?
Right.
So if, what would we add the third category for? It's going to fall in one of those two zones. So I'm good with it.
We get into that discussion talking about where they should belong.
Yeah.
You know, that's still. More than one, I'm sure. Get set when we come back, where the liquor store with drive in, drive in service and liquor store without drive in service.
Okay, so our primary task here really was restructuring of the ordinance and it's nice that we're diving into some of the meat behind it. Um, so I guess when we start talking about zone districts and where these are located, I'm not anticipating real substantial changes with regard to that. So, and I just offer that for. Yeah, unless there's something that's glaring that, oh, why is this here? My expectation or assumption was that we're pretty much sticking with where stuff is now for, for the purposes of this, this level. Um, in terms of what we call things and how it's listed, um, yeah, that is that attempt to, um, clean up, modernize, streamline, uh, create less confusion between the various ways at which you could obtain food in this country. So that's, that's, yeah, it's kind of a wiggly line we're walking with the, the project we're doing here, but that's that's just to kind of refresh what our goal was.
That's a good point.
So. But great debate. Um, Jen and I are, never knew you could talk about fast food for this long.
You know, don't you have discussions when we look at these two juices there? Loud and you're saying. Why don't we provide consulting? It must for clarity reasons, it helps to keep them separate, but yeah.
Exactly.
And my last one under food, eating, drinking establishments is a bar. Right, and I suggest use the word tavern because that's more of a local word. So well, bar, tavern, lounge, nightclub, food and drink. And with others, you just said the bar lounge nightclub, you want to move up to eating, drink, right? Is there what else is another one?
Nope.
Who was listed at night, nightclub as well.
Yeah.
Okay, Jen, nobody is, um, disputing that, um, to move the, the bar lounge nightclub out of entertainment slash recreation and up to the eating, drinking establishments.
Okay. Yeah, I was just noticing that when you guys started talking about bar lounge nightclub that it is down here. So, um, are we good with moving it up to food?
Nobody was objecting.
Sorry, say that one more time?
Yes, let's move it up.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So then as we move into entertainment and recreation, this one gets quite a bit longer. Um, let's see here, it's all businesses. We just changed the terminology on that and we've, I think we've talked about that one enough in previous meetings. Um, let's see. I'm just looking down the list here for any of the ones that we've changed. We did discuss a change to golf or baseball driving range, park three golf course, um, in our definition. We proposed a change to golf driving range, call three golf, I can't say that side part, three golf course and batting rate cage. Um, let's see. Uh, the other one was recreational vehicle park, and there was some question in the definitions about separate R B sales as a use. And I think we've actually already fairly well resolved that in the definition, so we should be pretty good to make the changes in here. Are there any questions on any of these other uses? And let's see what we have from Larry too.
Okay, we're already talking about relocating the bars of the previous section. Relocate the bar lounge, uh, accessory to the new accessory category that we'll talk about later. Because definitely accessory to hotels, motels, so on and so forth. Change the entertainment facility to cultural facility. When I looked at the entertainment facility, I looked at the definition right, right directly next to it, it says libraries, art galleries, museums, community center, legitimate theater, performance center and other similar cultural uses. I would suggest we call these cultural facilities instead of entertainment.
Take entertainment out altogether or do cultural entertainment facilities?
Then we can use entertainment.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else. Next one I have, and stop me if you want to talk about this further. Is add art fairs under cultural facility or under new temporary uses? Yeah. Right now we added it somewhere. Where do we add them? We added them under, uh, uh, what we just called cultural facilities. I think art fairs are typically, are there temporary use or festival type thing?
Yes.
More art fair district, right? Which is great when we. Then my last, what's a baseball driving range?
What's a baseball?
Batting.
Batting.
Yeah, now it's batting cage. It's a batting, why it's a batting cage or golf driving range, right? I was noticing it's golf or baseball driving range.
Golf range or baseball.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's clunky wording, but.
Okay, just a reason we must clear up. And I'm going to suggest under the recreation, entertainment indoor and outdoor, then we, there's some additional examples, what those may be. Where we're.
Are they, do they need to be in the use table or they show up in the definition of that?
Definition at this point.
Yeah.
Yep. That's all my comments on entertainment and recreation.
Okay, any other discussion on that? No. All right, retail sale. Um, again, I'm going to go down and kind of identify the ones that we talked about with definitions. Uh, some of these were not present in our current definition, so we highlighted that. Probably need to get a definition added. Um, two of those would be your childcare home, small and large, which I knew we, you guys have mentioned throughout this process, so. Um, they are in the use table. We just need to make sure they're defined. Um, condominiumized business we had removed from definitions, I believe we need to remove that as a use. And then kiosk we had removed for definitions, so we'll remove that as a use. Uh, we did talk about kind of just restating a couple of these, so retail, so large retailer, I think we talked about changing that to say retailer comma large, and then I think we have a retailer comma small. Um, but we do have this huge retail store category that was condensed from a lot of different uses in your current use table. So, um, that to me is where we need to just define retail large and retail small.
We want to consider.
Conversations.
We want to consider retail medium.
Mom, you don't watch.
Yeah.
Only in the clothing that's sold in the retail store. Um, and then we do have these two liquor stores, and I think there was some, quite a bit of discussion on whether we wanted the liquor store with drive through, we should say, change that to drive through, but drive through or not. And one thing that we could do is just say liquor store. And in standards, we could talk about drive through or not drive through and address the stacking, if that's something you want to do. So now I'll turn it back to you guys for discussion.
I think with regard to the liquor store and the drive through window, that, that potentially gets handled similarly to the restaurant end of things. Once we sort out the, the drive through window with the restaurant, um, just for consistency there, I recognize that um, that the liquor store is not the same as the bar with the sit down service. I, I realize it's still a counter service for pick up and go. It's, um, but, but yeah, that's, that's kind of where that is.
Well, and, and part of our conversation that we had is we wanted to make sure something was in there so that we didn't potentially have something happen and then we had to readjust again. We did with the S T R. So I think we were just trying to get out of the curve.
Okay.
Now, this is just a question, um, when, in the summary of the list of things, it noted that the kiosk definition we took out. So does that mean that line fifty-eight come, kiosk comes out to?
Yeah, that's.
That was what the point.
Yeah, that's part of the temp to say.
Let's go back to our previous session. We're putting the grocery store and supermarket in here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
We're getting rid of supermarket, just going grocery store small.
Yeah, that's correct. Each size is.
Catherine. We still can't hear you. But we're putting grocery store small and grocery store large under retailer and removing supermarket. Is that my understanding? Is that correct?
I'm not clear on the terms, but definitely grocery store and supermarket, we're moving to retail sales. And whether they both continue to appear with those specific terms that I, I.
Yeah, I just, I remember we had a long discussion on supermarket versus grocery store and I thought we decided we're just going to call them grocery store small and grocery store large and get rid of supermarket, but.
I think that's probably the more correct term.
Collection as well.
It's all going to be dependent on size.
Yes, that's part, that's part of our definitions. Yeah.
Larry, do you want to go through your suggestions for this section?
Love to, but I don't know if the rest of my colleagues would like.
Very, very.
I know. Yeah, I, I'm going to recommend that we re-add the unified business development project. That was a part of retail sales before. And this comes directly out of our P U D requirements or provisions. Where we talked about P U Ds are primarily residential, but they can also be for unified business development. So we could either add that back in under definitions or, or uses right now or re-look at a P U D, but I'd recommend that we just add that back in for now. As we get to talking about P U Ds, we can talk about that further and make further adjustments. Same thing, I'd recommend that we add mixed use businesses. Um, so we just had that with our, um, was the station we were talking about. Mixed use businesses, what that meant.
That was mixed uses in general and not specific to mixed use business.
Okay. Wow, where did I see mixed use businesses?
Oh, it could be in there, but yeah, the station was about mixed uses more broadly.
I'll put a question mark right on it. Talked about relocating convenience store of the food, eating, drink establishment. How about adding crematories to funeral institutions, funeral services institutions? Or do you want to keep that separate?
If you want to add it into the same place that cemeteries are?
No. This is.
For some reason I didn't when I see that under retail.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Oh, because it's under funeral services. So, you know, what she posed on here. That we add crematory, crematories to funeral institution.
Isn't there, isn't there a different, uh, we years, the markup that's in here. You've got a smoke stack and other things, right? That you have to deal with, which is different than conducting a funeral.
Okay. Okay.
That's a good point. This charge from a crematorium is pretty normal.
Well, and. Granddaughter of funeral director here, so unfortunately. Family business knowledge. Within the, 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 the old terms were like funeral parlor, funeral home, mortuary. That you've got customers that come because they've had a loss in their family, so there's a consultation. Sometimes they have assembly areas where they do. Whether it's a lake or even a memorial service for someone. Now, with regard to whether or not somebody's being embalmed or cremated. Those are, you know, functions that occur and. You out on the eastern plains, we had one right in the middle of town that that provided both services. And you never knew when either one was happening. I'm sorry, this is over graphic, but if you think about the purpose of when somebody is cremated, the whole purpose is to capture ash. So you're typically not even aware of something's going on. On a really cold day, there might be a little heat wave that you see, but you see that out of a chimney. Where somebody's burning a gas or a or wood fireplace. So there's, there's not a discernible difference.
Interesting.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of how that shakes out.
It is. Crematory is currently listed in medical services and it's allowed. The same conditional intensity permitted in C C R S. So it's got the same zones, but it's called.
And why is it called?
So it has to do with body, I guess.
But you know, it doesn't call, call out, this is always intriguing to me, it doesn't call out embalming facility. You know, which typically happens with the funeral home. Yeah, and those, those are options or services that are available that. From my experience, just don't have real pronounced impacts. From a different personal experience back east, in terms of trying to help somebody cite a crematory. My recommendation is if you are comfortable with where a funeral home is located and you're not requiring a conditional use for that. Do you not separate out any of that, that if you're comfortable with that as a use by right? Because otherwise, that's a great topic that will pack council chambers. That I don't know necessarily adds to. The, the value in the process, that if you're able to address adequate parking and it's in a zone district where you're comfortable with other kinds of commercial uses. That may be something to consider.
Then you just, you just permit, just permit it all. And so all this stuff, so but that's where he was on my sheet. Crematory is new.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, it's a new definition.
Yeah, we added it in the definitions.
So we proposing to define funeral services to include funeral parlors, mortuaries, funeral services.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the other way to think about that is, you know, the, the, the menu of options, you know, whether it is embalming crematory, green burial. You know, there's a variety of alternatives.
Okay. Well, I told my wife I wanted to be cremated. I also told her at the same time, that's why I buy a large barbecue.
Fire chicken, are you going green this year?
Whatever. All right, it's in the other, see two other ones we talked about. Moving the large retailer and small retailer to the retail subcategories. Want to kind of revisit gun sales again. We had something called gunsmith somewhere. I don't know if it ended up. In this area, but. I was thinking gunsmith was basically the manufacturing or pair of guns that really the sale. Should it be?
It's, I'm just saying it's current.
I know, but I'm thinking a typical gun sales would not be best suited under a retail subcategory.
Depends on the definition, there's no definition here.
I know.
We added it under industrial gunsmith large scale, but.
When, when is the gunsmith? Somebody. Previous was preparing, modifying, or manufacturing firearms.
Yeah.
But that was a part of large scale. Is there a small scale too? I see right next to it, is it hidden somewhere? We crossed, we deleted gunsmith large scale. And once.
Problem is first only to have something adjusted or hard replaced, that's against that operation. And it could take place in a retail firearms store.
So you could do gun sales. It's the. I think, I think that was our thinking that in fact it is. Okay, unless, unless, unless it was more factory like, it's more retail, I think. I think that was our discussion.
That sounds familiar.
And because in the, in our notes, under gunsmith large scale, we have takeout a table. It's the notes that I have, is what I have as well.
Yeah.
That's what I have as well. And then add it into retail sales, just as a gun store slash repair.
Yeah.
Gunsmith, not manufacturing.
I think that that's really helpful, Catherine, because then you're talking about repair, you're not talking about manufacturing.
Right.
And that could be a category that goes back under industrial. Okay. Last one I have under this section is change personal services to personal consumer services and repair. Because a lot of things we're talking about for personal services at the bottom of the page there. Is dealing with, with repairs, so let's just include the word there.
Just personal services, right, so whether you're repairing something or you're getting your hair cut, right?
Or the dry cleaner.
Yeah, it's just a person. Say really good that.
Right, and I said, let's just include the word, word repair with that tactic of land use. Personal services or repair, repairs of justice bicycles, small ones. Otherwise, we just label them. I'm content with the way it is. Me too. I'm done for this section.
Okay. Sound good. Any other notes in this section? All right. Moving on to office professional services. We just had two, two categories, office and professional service. That can be repetitive. Professional services is not currently in the definition, and then we didn't have any specific comments in the definitions for. Office, but I do see that Larry has a couple of. Comments, so.
I know we spent a lot of time at the last meeting talking about. When, what an office was, and it always include professional, administrative, so on and so forth. So I'm just suggesting that we offered additional examples of what we think options include. There's a whole clip, I think. That would clarify that. My other comment was downwards says professional services. I was called that actually business services, because we're talking about printing, boot prints, book buying, so on and so forth. So recommend. And then change from professional services to professional slash business services.
That works for me, how does everyone else agree?
Objection to that change.
Okay, are we moving on to automotive and repair?
Yes.
Okay. So we did actually have quite a few changes to this in the definition, we had talked about changing the auto word to motor vehicle. So where it's auto dealership, I would say we need to change that to motor vehicle dealership. Auto rental, motor vehicle rental, and so on. See if there were any other notes. Motor vehicle. We discussed combining the service station and changing the title to motor vehicle service station. So if everyone's still good with those changes. I don't have any other suggestions in this section from our definitions conversation. I'll turn it over to Larry and the rest of you.
Well. The rest of us. That's true, okay. Larry, you have something? I suggested that, well, we certainly clarified it when we talk about. Vehicle changes from auto, so that that changes some of my comments. On the next page, when we talk about. Auto storage yard. Again, I, I just wanted to clarify those. Are we talking about these temporary storage units, storage facilities that are facilitated by C dot? And we had one of those before us a couple of months ago too. Or is this someplace where they want people want to store their vehicles, do you have a place to store them? And if so, do we need to make a distinction between them as two? And are you talking about separate storage, vehicle storage? Are you talking about a combined storage facility that store can store vehicles? Yes. Auto storage.
Our definition says. Building premises or land in which operable and licensed motor vehicles are stored for a period of time and excess of seventy two hours. And that these uses may include transportation equipment as well as vehicle storage.
And that's why I consider it to be the C dot storage yard.
My thought, Jen, is we need to take another look at this to make sure that we cover just that. That general automotive storage, like, like you all are suggesting, where people store a vehicle for a period of time. As opposed to the, the temporary tow yard, which is more related to. You know, just temporary storage. After an accident, you know, when the adjuster still needs to come and look and you go back and clean out your car and, you know. All those kind of miserable things and it leaves after seventy two hours or depending upon the length of the, the C dot investigation, it might be there longer. And that is definitely different than the junkyard or salvage yard.
The, the definition, actually, there's three different categories essentially, the last one you first the junkyard.
Yeah.
But it's operable, this auto storage yard is operable and licensed vehicles. So it has to be a licensed vehicle, but you're bringing operable or inoperable, so you, you created a third category.
Yeah, now there's the, the, the temporary tow yard. Yeah, the, the operable. Storage and then junkyards. So and junkyards may be more under an industrial use, and I doubt we permit them anywhere. Since we're just, we're just so small. And those tend to be more rural or kind of a county, county use, but. Yeah, those are probably the three distinctions that, that's great summary.
Think junkyards ought to go under prohibited uses.
Well, you list them in the table, you just don't.
Right.
Have a.
All which means we may not have a category in licensed inoperable vehicles. Like, is that, I mean, if some. We just, we gave a condition, we approved somebody with a tow yard. A year or so ago. Presumably, it's, it's, it's used to that is when, when he toes in a vehicle, he can unhook it. And have it for some period of time there. We define that anywhere?
That one we permitted under contractor services, I believe, was the broad category we had.
That was used for that. Answer that service is at least for some brief period of time, having unhooking the. The vehicle and then, I, I don't know that we address it.
I think it was contractor services with outdoor storage, that's, that's how that was looked at. And then through the course of the conditional use permit, you know, he described the details of the, the operation in terms of what that.
So like you probably do, so we do as an accessory use probably allow it as long as it's screened.
And lighting and signage and things like that.
That's how we permitted it anyhow, under that, that application.
So the only where it's principal use, there is no principal use for scrap junk vehicles or inoperable vehicles. It'll have to be, have to be accessory in somebody else's use.
I believe so. Sounds accurately.
All, all of it says the definition we've got here, auto storage yard. Up to seventy two hours for operable and licensed vehicles is probably what we're looking for. Well, that was my concern, just that we had. Two or three distinctive uses, something like. We moved to industrial.
Actually, I have a question, sorry. I know that we talked about changing auto to motor vehicles, that correction.
She's not.
Okay, but in our definitions, we still list automotive or auto, auto rental, auto repair. Auto repair light, heavy auto storage, so should we playing devil's advocate, change the definitions to?
That's what she said she was doing.
Yes. Change to. Motor vehicle repair, heavy motor vehicle repair by motor vehicle storage yard.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that's still the, the change that you guys want to make.
Okay.
And Jen, one I suggest we do not change, and this is just based upon a discussion that I recall we had. Car wash stays car wash, because car wash. Car wash suddenly allowed lots of zones and more commercial than anything. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean heavy truck wash.
Or tractor trailer wash, yeah.
Car wash should stay car washed, not motor vehicle wash or something else. Would you create another definition in use for truck? Like another heavy vehicle wash? Maybe. If it's necessary, or we'll let when somebody comes in with it. I think, I think a planning department will not have a hard time figuring that that. Motor vehicle heavy repair would also include truck wash, whatever. We're going to include it under the definition. For the heavy truck contributor. We have that somewhere.
It's the good news related to that is we don't have that type of industry peripherally. You know, in this area that creates the demand for that, the same way you do like in Greeley with all the cattle trucks. Driving, you know, driving into the, the beef plants and such there, so. You know, we're not an end destination where somebody offloads and wants to clean out before they go on to the next thing.
Yeah, it brings up another thought, I just had that. When we use the word truck. We have a wide range where a truck could be, could be F one fifty. Or it could be a semi trailer.
Would you go off axle then or by size or?
I don't know. We need to make some kind of distinction sometimes. Maybe you're someone.
I mean, you could, you could. I'm sorry, Leah, I was just going to say you could say purse, you could just, it excludes personal trucks.
I was even thinking, if you got a car wash, if somebody's running a car wash. If there's somebody who thinks that somebody brings in a, a regular, a small Ford F one fifty. If there's somebody who thinks that somebody brings in a, a regular, a small Ford F one fifty or something like that, they think that doesn't. Come and talk to the planning departments, the planning department tell them to find, find another thing to complain about.
Or do we clarify?
Yeah, or where does a twenty-six foot moving truck fall into? Can you do that in a car wash? I mean, if somebody wants to do, we can probably go back in the definition, car wash, do something with it. Take on trucks. Or it says for washing, used for washing automobiles or light trucks.
There we go.
Is that doing, Jen, is that, follow that? Definitely a car wash.
Yeah, that would work.
That's all I have.
Going to industrial.
Okay, do we want to work, move into industrial? Let's see here, this is the one, commercial warehousing and. Get something else before, it's not wrapping the text right now. And storage, we have changed that, warehousing and distribution in the definition. Uh, gunsmith, I think you guys already mentioned that we had to. Decided to remove the definition of gunsmith, so we would need to remove from the table. Um, manufacturing and industry with a new use that we were, had added to the definition, so we need to add it to the table. Although we have many, manufacturing and industry, sorry, so we have light and heavy. Um. Mini storage. I know we have some discussion about mini storage and how that would differ from a professional business office storage, but I think we. Figured this out, rectified this with the definitions.
My notes say warehouse comma self-storage.
Can you say that again?
Again, my notes on my, my list is. Warehouse comma self-storage and cross off mini storage.
Yes, I do have that in the note here. It looks like at one time it was warehouse, common self-storage, but we, we can change it back to that if that makes sense.
And I'm going to think about that one. And probably chat with the rest of my team at some point about that, just from the standpoint of what does the layperson call it when they come in? Or the, the guy who's wanting to develop that as a business. Just trying to make sure we get to the right spot in the, the use matrix without a lot of, a lot of issue. So with that, I'm, we maybe at staff level asking to go back to calling it. Mini storage slash self-storage.
I think right now the more common term in the industry is self.
Self-storage is what I hear the most.
Yeah, I, I mean, I spent six years managing them.
Okay.
I've heard of many in a while.
Well, I've been around for a while, so that may be where that comes from. So, so I said that might, that term might get revised a little bit, but. But I appreciate your comment, Don, in terms of what is the, the more contemporary industry standard. So that, that's helpful, so self-storage.
That's all the comments I had on industrial. I was just curious, did we talk about boat camper trailer RV storage? Those outside lots, storage lots anywhere in this, I. I know there's some in the area and none in the town probably, but maybe it was in the not permitted uses or something, but.
I seem to recall the discussion of RV storage, but you bring up a good.
RV storage is down there in the prohibited, yeah. So, okay, I just was missing seeing it and that's down there in prohibited, that's where it's at, okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else on industrial? All right. Uh, let's see, let's move on to institutional civic public. Um, we are, I think we're still working on religious land use, but I think that's the terms that we're going to use based on. The attorney's review, but we can, we can circle back, Karen and I will circle back on that.
And I, I did send to Nina the current definitions associated with those uses. The, the proposed one that was in the, the regulations that, that we all went ew. Over that sparked the need to have Nina come up with a better definition. And then I've got a book in my office that's specific. Specifically to define zoning terminology and such, so there was a several definitions in there. That I had scanned in and sent off to her for, for consideration also. And that included both just churches as well as. Actually, I had a definition of mega church that I think I shared with Jen. And they actually start mega church at ten thousand people. So they really mean like, they put the M in mega. But anyhow, yeah, we provided all that information and I just haven't gotten anything back at this point.
Did you think you got the words religious?
It does look like we, in the education section, I know we had talked about changing all these to a school comma, some of the school comma private parochial. School common train vocational.
The only one we don't have is public schools. We don't allow them.
Say that again?
We don't allow public schools.
No public schools in what the part.
Not according to this table.
But it's not listed in the government.
No, but it's not.
Public and semi, under government, public and semi, public facilities, other than industrials type places.
Yeah.
Yes, your government runs it, they can, they can put it most anyplace they want currently.
Okay, so since we're on this conversation, maybe the better way to define this, because we're, if I remember right, when we were talking about definitions. We talked about the impacts and the differences between potentially a university and like a trade school. The trade schools, you've got sometimes more heavy equipment as people learn a particular trade. So rather than distinguish between public, private parochial schools.
K twelve.
Exactly. Or pre-K, pre-K through twelve would be maybe the better distinction there.
That's a good idea.
Got that Jen? Nod yes? She's.
Yes, so we would do pre-K schools. A pre-K to twelve schools and then.
The trade vocational.
And universities.
College, yep, those I think are all good. Because there are different age groups, different traffic patterns, different potential impacts.
Okay, that works.
And it moves us away from who the owner is, it really is the, the use and the impacts of the use.
And then we have libraries, special museum under education. Does that stay there? Does that go under government slash nonprofit?
Now, we just changed the cultural.
It sounds like, it sounds like there is no definition of cultural, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Like an entertainment.
Yeah, I like that.
So, so what's the suggestions to remove it then?
To just move it back under cultural?
Yeah.
It's already.
I mean, there.
Instead of.
It's already there.
Educational, just be under cultural now.
But it's already there.
Yeah, it'll still be there, but yeah.
Yeah, so you can remove this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta, everything that comes out gets a plus.
Yes.
Okay, then we get into the government and nonprofit uses. Cemetery, we had talked about before, so this is where that one came in. Civic space. I think this one actually, we kind of came into the conversation of the parks. That we were kind of holding on until we get the parks plan done. And my note here, if we go essential services and utilities. Oh, we talked about just lifting out the types of services, so I think the, the title is still correct. We added administration to government use, so it's government and administration use. Government operations use, the use that we've added in the definition, so we've added it here. And nonprofit use will have, we will want to remove, we removed that one. Throughout because it's not actually used in the code. And then public utility facilities, clarify public use and expand uses to include more types of facilities. I think that's what we had talked about in the definition, so I think that the title seemed like it was okay.
You know, I, I know what a city. Utility is, I think I do very much. But I'm not too sure if I know what a. Public utility facility. Are we, when we say public utility, are we talking about gas, electric, cell phone?
Yep.
Yeah, is, I, I know what your point there is making is different from saying a utility.
Different from the water.
Right, is the water sounds more public utility than electric, because the water is from the city. And that's, is that the kind of, that's the issues you raised, right?
In, when I hear the word public, I think. So I coined the word. Where, where I say a semi-public provider utilities.
Or profits?
Or profit.
In common usage, public utility does mean any electric or gas.
A lot of things too, that's.
Well, Larry's making a fair point.
And you're right, Jen, the definition under civic space, just talked about public parks and facilities. You touched on that, that was one of my notes. I'm also going to ask that we put in public parks, trails and open space. With the word hold, because I know we're still waiting on the plan to come through, but. We need to have parks under government facilities.
Isn't that civic space?
No. Civic space needs to be expanded to include city hall, cultural center.
I thought those, I thought civics, civic space means exactly parks and you could change the word civic space to parks. Government use includes lots of other stuff, administrative offices, Karen's office, and the building as a whole. Other sort of works building, you're right. I'm subject, except, yeah, there's, we do make a distinction, industry, industrial operations.
When you look at our definition, it says any, oh, means any public land available for recreational, educational, cultural or. A setting use. Such as parks and.
So, but we also agreed that we're going to wait until we see the new park rec plan, see how they define these things.
Maybe a different title for.
Suicidal treatment.
Parks, trails, open space, cultural.
So we were leaning that way, but we're waiting.
We've got a whole bunch of definitions. Community parks, main parks, neighborhood parks, school parks and special use.
Well.
Right.
Yeah, pocket parks, I think there was, there was more parks still, yeah.
Yeah. All agrees.
Difference, so the city's going to call a big park or a little park, the city can put in condition.
And this is public utility provider. Words. So what do we settle?
The infrastructure.
Before we go on, we were just having a sidebar here, that was maybe some clarification too. The public utility facility does lend itself to a little confusion. And the government use, so what we were contemplating was in the definition area for government use, we just include government owned utilities. Facilities. Suicidal treatment plant, water, pump stations, water, is government owned, and then there's public utility provider facilities. Like Core Electric, Black Hills Energy, anybody else, so that would keep the government use as the government stuff. Which is conditional in all those zones and then the public utility provider facilities would be something that Core Electric or somebody builds. Transmission, commission station, substation, whatever.
I like that.
Yep, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Cause that was nice and clear.
So just end the public and semi-public facilities, just somewhere in there, add government owned utilities. Facilities or something like that.
Did you catch that, Jen?
That okay?
I did, but then as I started to type it up, I lost it, so.
Under government use, we just want to add a.
Government administrative use, those government owned facilities such as a. Suicidal treatment plant and whatnot, and then I did get the public facility, so that's now public provider.
Public utility provider facilities.
That looks very familiar.
And that makes that more clear, and then government use, just an example of. One government use could be government provided utilities.
Which includes fire, drainage, parking, water.
Water.
And all the utilities. I had a concern about the comic called nonprofit use. We start talking about lodges, fraternal and social organization, headquarters for scout. I don't know if nonprofit use is the right word. Cause we're talking about basically assembly halls and offices for these organizations. And I don't, I, I think we just need to remove nonprofit from this section and find another place for that, that.
And Larry, for what it's worth, I had already kind of put a bracket around that particular, you know, because the middle column there, the longer one is. You know, how things are currently listed, so I put a bracket around that with a question mark. And contemplating that, yeah, that potentially does need to be somewhere else. And especially when you talk about all the various fraternal organizations, Elks, Moose, you know. Masonic Lodge, a lot of those really are, you know, assembly kind of, kind of things. And probably does need to be under, up higher, under that assembly category. Where it's listed more as, you know, private lodges and clubs.
No, I have that listed, you do.
Yeah. So.
I agree with what you just said, Karen. And we usually do have something about private lodges and clubs, so I think we can add that up to assembly. Let's see, okay, so that would take us down to infrastructure. Looking at communications. Some of these, well, actually, most, a lot of these base station is, is related to telecommunications. So that's a new term that wasn't present in the definition, so we need to rectify that. Uh, let's see, we removed telephone business office from our definition. Decided that was an antiquated term. And wireless facility is currently not present in definition. I think as far as wireless telecommunications, though, I think we've all agreed that there may need to be some. Input from the attorney's office on this, on those term.
I think that's accurate, Jen.
So are there any additional comments from Larry? It looks like maybe a couple. Do you still want to highlight those?
Sure. I, I suggest that we identify this category as infrastructure and utilities. That kind of dovetails with what we just talked about a few minutes ago, so that needs to be modified a little bit. And we have two sections, one would be communications. Cause we all know the communication is all forms, is changing rapidly and we can't keep up. And I can't keep up. And the other section would be public provider utilities, which we just talked about as well. And those things can be moved out of the government section. Or that move down to the public provider utility section. And again, I'm, I'm just separating those two into communications and something. Public provider utilities, and that's all the comments I had on infrastructure slash utilities.
Okay, I had my notes, my notes I had is having crossed out micro mobility fleet as a definition. I'm assuming because, because we were thinking it was some kind of accessory use or something. Is that? We're not even making a big argument, I just, that was my note showed that, so taken out. In practice, I doubt people are going to put in a, buy a lot, buy a facility to run a micro mobility fleet instead, it's going to be in front of the store or in front of, you know, somebody else you're going to have. And have a few stations where you can plug it in and even transfer. Am I, am I wrong? Did everybody else have a still in definitions?
Jen, what did your notes show around the micro mobility facility and when we talked about definitions?
Actually, it's micro mobility fleet. It's not a facility, it's a fleet, which is an odd name too, it's the vehicles, the name we seem to refer to. That's right, and the definition was any micro mobility vehicles, the ownership and operation of a specific micro mobility business operation. Or like, like the scooters that are causing problems down in the springs.
Yeah. But that's not, that's not under communication.
No, it's not under transportation.
Okay, you already went there.
Micro mobility fleet is clearly wrong, if, if we really need to, it's something we want a either a transfer station or docking station for micro mobility vehicles, I'm wondering if it's really a zoning.
Yeah.
A lot of zoning provisions, it's set up areas you could do this in, or is this?
This is new to me, I, I, I need to do research.
It's a commercial, it's, it's a commercial business renting out the scooters, and I can't park them, and I can't put a facility like that in front of my house because that would be a business.
I would probably be able to do it if I had.
A kiosk.
Well, you're trying to, you had to say, if you wanted to, George, if you, other stores wanted to put them out in front of that, it would sound to me like an accessory use for the facility, I would agree.
And, and the springs only allows those in certain zones through the city.
And it's parked up every corner, there's one's leg around.
People just ditch them, that's why they're becoming such a problem down there. All right, I, I guess, I can see some of the problems with the definition, we did cross it out, and I'm just not sure it's another category to be put in there.
I have a question mark.
I want, as a lawyer, I want credit for making something shorter.
Yes.
Duly noted.
So Karen, I, I had a question back on communication though, I heard we crossed out telephone business office. And what those used to be, and they still are, actually, we still have one here, is CenturyLink. And that behind the oh, the U-DIN, right, that's, that's what they would consider a business office. It's where all the switching gears. So, so I don't think we're putting new ones in, but I don't know, and I don't know how you zone that, or how we zoned it.
Um, I, if I remember correctly, we determined it didn't need to be called out as such, because whether you know, it's probably more akin to like the CPA's office, only it has no customers.
Yeah, well, right, it used to, right?
Yeah, so, so it's just, it's a professional, at this point in time, it's just a basically professional office. But without real staffing or.
At the bottom, infrastructure in it, but, yeah, I, I just wanted to point that out, and then, um, so, I mean, it's, I'm fine if we're taking it out, but there is, there are those things, those kind of, they call them COs and BOs. But the base station one, what, we don't have a definition on that, at least I don't have it on here, but did, did we talk about what that is, like, where are we going with a base station?
That was that was one that Jen just said, that we have omitted putting a definition to, so we, we, we need to come back with that for y'all.
Okay.
So, what, what's, what is it a base station for?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I came out.
Charging, charging electric motors, or is it, no, something else.
So I've never heard of that.
What was it?
Use the term base station where I work as the electronics that go into the base station that go to do telecommunications, wireless.
Hmm.
We call the building stack.
Oh, sure, but, yeah.
It was the base station that, that goes for telecommunications is what we use it as a base station, I don't know what this term is, so I agree with you, George.
Yeah, I've never.
And may, maybe that's what we consider the building behind the unit.
I mean, that's not, that's not typically what they call them, and I haven't, in the industry, I haven't heard that term used, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and like I said, ours is just from a self-selling standpoint, sales standpoint, development standpoint of the technology.
Okay.
Retail sales in, like the riding store? No.
It's probably more for the tower.
Yeah, no, that's, this is infrastructure.
Of a utility provider facility, there you go.
Okay. So cool, we'll get a definition.
Yes.
Because this also, this also mentions land survey too, as, as part of that definition.
Which definition?
Um, base, the base station definition.
Really?
Oh, in terms of what you're looking up on your phone, okay.
Yeah, wireless communications, telephone communications and land survey. Such as a GPS receiver, transceivers, mobile phones, telephones, computer networks, which have same.
So anyhow, it is flagged, just we need to come back with the definition.
All right, on to transportation, and I know you guys were talking a little bit about micro mobility and docking hubs. I will say the one thing that I've seen in a couple of communities with the micro mobility hubs, or, you know, we can combine those into one, I, I can't remember, perhaps like back in the definitions, what we had talked about, but it, it has to do with location of the facilities, and you guys already did hit on that, you know, that, you know, you might want to have it in a more commercial location. But also I've seen down to some standards where, you know, you want your micro mobility hub to be near the street. But typically off of the sidewalk, so that your scooters or whatever aren't just cluttering the sidewalks. But some communities that I've worked in have actually had standards that prohibit it from being too close to the street, like it needs to be outside of a step back or something, so that's one area where you may want to just consider that if you're, if we're considering these terms in the code, then just putting some standards in that say that they're allowed in the front step back or whatever, up here the sidewalk, if that makes any sense.
It does, Jen, thank you. So I did have one question. On the docking hub and station and fleet and micro, micro mobility fleet, we're allowing them in MFU and MFP? Is it the MFU just because those are apartment buildings typically? Is that the, the logic there?
Well, it's a conditionally used though.
It, it, yeah, but it's, it's not allowed as a used period in the others, so I'm just are we, are we doing it conditionally because it's typically apartment buildings or?
Procedurally though, we weren't looking at those columns just yet, right? I think we're, we're coming back to that in another pass.
And then the other part of that is, in preparation for that, y'all may want to take a look at the zoning district map and where those zone districts are located. Because chances are that more dense development or multifamily housing is closer to other amenities facility, so it's the concentration of people. And then the concentration of commercial uses where those, those intersect a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to under, I'm just trying to understand the, the logic.
So that's likely the logic, but I would recommend looking at the, the zoning map, you know, with that, that aspect of things.
Yes, the theory is you could put some up off of Research Drive and the northern part of the city, because there's a little cluster there, people want to take their scooters downtown.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe.
And it looked like we had removed parking facilities, public and private from our definitions and had identified them to be removed from the uses. Um, I think that was it in this section.
Yeah, that was one of my recommendations, separate those two. Public from private.
Can you say that one more time? I didn't quite get it.
Separate two definitions for parking facilities. One for public and the other one for private. I think those are two distinct uses for sure.
Well, and that's.
Yeah, and actually when we came across this one in the definitions, we decided to remove it altogether, so I don't know if we need to have any more discussion on that one or circle back to that.
So i- in essence, it just says parking facilities.
No, no, I'm not sure of the final result, but the previous, the definition had proposed region for parking facilities, public or private. Was maybe not what you expected, public or private offbeat parking area that does not charge a fee for parking. And is accessory to a primary user building that is located nearby or in the same line. So public parking, public or private, this was the parking lot next to a building, the apartment building's own lot.
Yeah.
So it's a funny name for a public or private, so so, so the definition, I'm not sure that we may have taken, taken out or not, but.
Yeah, that, that's what Jen was saying, we did opt to eliminate it, because this, as you were saying, it is accessory to a use, you know, that it was the parking lot for the grocery store, the parking lot for the apartment building. Uh, which is different than where it says parking facility slash commercial, and that's like a parking garage or a surface lot where you're actually paying to rent the space on a temporary basis.
It's either, it's either accessory use, or it's a commercial parking lot, or no one's going to build a public, a private lot. But it's not accessory to a building that they're not going to charge for.
Right, and that was the definition we opted to keep.
Okay, so that's.
But so parking facilities commercial.
Okay.
Okay, so in short, public or private is off that.
Right.
We've removed off.
That whole line is getting struck, yeah.
Okay, we are almost to the bottom of the list.
Oh, no.
We have waste related facility, we have recycling facility. There weren't really any changes to that terminology. But I do see a note from Larry.
Thanks, Jen. I would suggest that we, and I had it here removed, and then thinking, well, we need to have this, we have it in our community, there's a waste transfer station. And we got caught up in waste, what that meant was it wet, it wasn't dry, so on and so forth, but I think we need a transfer station. Which is different than a recycling facility.
Under prohibited uses.
You're voice related.
Well, under prohibited, it's limitless garbage transfer station.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just suggesting, let's put it back under waste related. Because we do have them.
I agree with you, Larry.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, I'm making note of that, and then we get into miscellaneous, we have some accessory and temporary uses mixed together here, so I think maybe what we want to do is we could either just keep them under miscellaneous or define temporary and accessory in two different categories. We had separated out accessory structure and accessory use, so you can see that added here with that yellow line. Um, we had removed art fairs from the definitions, we had combined that with special events. Um, and then that's the only note, that's the only other noted here from definitions, and we all noted short-term rental, so short-term rental is listed here, so obviously it's with up the lodging, and we'll put a big hold on that.
Well, what I recommend is we remove miscellaneous category altogether. And each of those things listed there can be placed under another section we've already talked about tonight. Utilities.
Mary, do you want to go through your other notes here, the, the new accessory uses and temporary uses?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that. I, I'm suggesting two new categories, one be accessory uses. And the other one being temporary. And I'm just brainstorming in my own brain, several accessory uses broken down to residential and non-residential. And I'm just going to list these off to you and see if they sound somewhat related to residential use, being accessory. Accessory duality units. Residential care homes. Garage, private detached, carport, storage shed. Recreational vehicle parking, storage, comma, private. Attenna or satellite dishes, and we kind of, so I can, discussion, we had about fifty feet or more. Gardens, greenhouse private, home occupations. Playground's private, swimming pool private, patio, detached deck. And solar or wind generation devices. Those can all be accessory uses to a dwelling.
Wasn't one of the ones you said, residential care facility, I think we already had that as a separate.
Yeah.
Not as an accessory use.
Yep, I had it on my list.
Say that again, you had on your list, what?
He forgot to cross it off.
Oh, okay.
Then I have non-residential uses, accessory uses, that would be signage. Outdoor eating areas. Here we go again, drive-in, drive-through facilities. Electric vehicle charging stations, and I just added parking lots. But I think it's just a category directly related to accessory uses would help clarify a lot.
Sounds like the drive-through, you may want to exercise from there, because that's going to be otherwise covered at a higher level. And you have one or not have one in medicine.
Okay. And then the other section that I recommend is called temporary uses. And those will include special things as special events. Garage, garage or yard sales, signage. Temporary construction offices and yards. Temporary home or real estate sales or business office. Temporary seasonal sales and temporary festivals or amusement events.
Sale signs covered elsewhere.
And then again, I think we can be real. All miscellaneous.
There's something else in the code about garage sale signs being excluded from from signage.
It's actually in the signage provisions, I believe.
Yeah, so I wouldn't add that one as a temporary use, we're not going to have people coming from permits for that. Signage, cross.
That's all I have until we get to prohibited uses.
Is, so does that mean in the section on miscellaneous uses? What, what is, what's left there? We just took accessory use or structure sort of separate category. Art fairs is gone.
Right.
Dynasty fall and chicken coops is going to go.
Right.
It'll be a special language that applies to whichever district it's in.
Yeah.
Farmers markets, you picked up on your temporary.
Yep.
Home occupations, you picked up on your temporary short-term rental, we already said it'll go elsewhere when we actually have something.
Home occupations was going in accessories, but.
Yeah, not necessarily temporary. Accessory, it's first listing. Solar generation private, I think he had that where it's, where it's accessory to a house. So it can go because if some, it's either private or someone wanted to put a a lot just for generating power for their neighborhood, that wouldn't be accessory use, so that's, that's prohibited.
Unless it's a used, not itemized and have to go through staff and through some.
It has to figure out what commercial district it could stand, sustained in, all right. Special events would be your temporary ones, wind generation privates like solar. All right, so like. Take the section out.
Yeah, I think somebody had mentioned that earlier, that um that I think everything that's listed here, like you just summarizedly. Has got a home somewhere else or another destination. So this was a a great holding bracket to make sure we talked about these things. But yeah, it's it's not likely not gonna show up in the the final versions.
So the special events um. Is a temporary use permit in the category, but it's not a temporary. Um, oh, that's never mind. Yeah, I was thinking accessory use temporaries, but it's just temporary. Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, the bottom line is you need a temporary use permit in order to hold a special use or a special event.
Yeah. Yep.
Do you wanna bring the beehives down here too into the residential accessory use of?
So I do have a question on the prohibited. Are we ready to go to prohibited?
Is, yeah, Jen, uh per our earlier conversation that um. If beehives, we were gonna set them up as accessory to residential, kind of similar to like the chicken.
We need new language doing that?
We might be able to work up with stuff we already have, um cause she had mentioned needing.
Next door neighbor has got, got hives, it's not a problem.
Yeah, she mentioned things like mostly probably related to distance or separation from a product, uh from a property line or for safety. Um so I'd be curious to see what uh she has to recommend around that. So.
Okay, I hate to regulate something you've never regulated it before. It's not a problem. Even if it's like some conception, okay, we don't need more regulation unless we need it.
I I don't believe, cause I hate, you know, somebody complained about my neighbor has bees and buzz around you and I don't like that. And there and there is a place where you gotta.
We got a prohibited uses then?
Yep. So when I was looking at the rest of the table, my natural inclination was looking for some of these items that are listed under prohibited. In those sections, and I was just thinking, some of these could be put in the section, like the junkyard under automotive, but say prohibited. And just listed there, if we wanna list prohibited ones, it it's kinda counter to what the table is telling you. It's just, this is the. Areas where your permitted use table. And then listing these as prohibited. Uh just to make it clear, right?
I know it sounds counterintuitive, but uh yes, you absolutely have to list certain things, even though they're not permitted in any zone district. And the marijuana uses are a prime example of that.
Sure. So that would go under agricultural to me.
Yeah, I don't, Ken wasn't saying don't list them. Ken was saying.
I just think they could be in the category with the word prohibited over it and keep it in the same category, just so you didn't.
Well, no, the fact that there's nothing in the square over on the right side says you can't do it.
Yeah, but.
But that's how you read the.
I like the idea of highlighting the prohibited. That's that's fine, you know, but under agricultural, it doesn't say anything about marijuana being prohibited till you go to the bottom. And I think it should be there in agriculture where you're looking for those things, if you're gonna make it useful for the public.
Waste related that has recycling facility, but it doesn't have garbage.
Transfer station.
Drunk junkyard.
Yeah, which would be prohibited.
He said it's a junkyard, could also look cars too, but it's a junkyard as a more general. It makes sense to put those things in the same, the same place.
And that that's what I.
With the notation.
Yeah.
Knows, no district is allowed.
No, I think we're in in consensus that those need to be redistributed throughout the appropriate category.
I would just like to suggest that we somehow make sure that it's. Visible, but it's not. Okay, that it is prohibited, you know, whether it be highlighted or colored or something different to to make sure people understand.
Do we now have an existing section called prohibited uses in our code?
I don't think so. It shows up like one of these where you've got. Some zone districts where it's allowed and some where it's not. So unless it says you can do this either through. Um a use by right or a conditional use permit. Um no, you can't do it in that zone district. So you potentially end up with a row with nothing. So that that's how the table functions.
But we can also double aside, just like Sean just said, prohibited.
Yeah, just like prohibited across it or something.
Yeah.
Well, this doesn't say it's prohibited, it's just blank. That means like, that means you forgot. So no, it's. You gotta pick a direction and be very strict to it, cause when you start blending systems. It creates confusion and employs attorneys.
Every, everything has its positive side.
Right now, did I hear you say a few minutes ago, move medical marijuana up here to wasted?
So I ask, we hear, we, what I'm hearing is yes, this needs to be redistributed to the appropriate category. And um I would like to let Jen and I take a look to make sure whatever that format is, that it is consistent in terms of how. The the nomenclature and things are utilized and applied.
Is membership clubs something?
It's marijuana membership.
Oh, that's what it means. It started sounding like picking up a lot of the uh of the fraternal organizations. Does that complete our agenda for the evening?
That's the only thing I had, and then we already did reports earlier while we were um waiting for Jen to rejoin us. And then we figured out it was all us where the problem lied.
Where are we headed next?
Uh, I think Jen and I need to talk about that. I recognize we desperately need to get back to chapter two and the structure um of what that looks like and the intent of the zoning districts. Um and then the other possibility is just into the. The various use standards, since there's been a lot of this where we I've identified, no, this is a specific standards for for this type of use. So those are kind of the the two things that are more more forefront in our minds at this point. So it'll be one of those two directions. And when we have some of that more nailed down, then we're probably gonna be circling back um to the. The table here in terms of verifying that these are highlighted in the right zone district. And that would be an updated table at that point. That would be consistent with the the definitions for that to be more functional.
That's exactly what I was gonna recommend, that we have the post uses over here. And we have the new revised definitions, if there is a one, and it's been under review or something.
Okay.
You don't have to feel like you have to fill something in for everything. And and I agree with the uh.
The the strategy, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Um I said, it's not a hundred percent clear, but that's the 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 gist of what our thoughts have been. Um to to try and, you know, build on the the work that we've been doing.
Well, any comments from the commissioners?
No.
In the case, it's nine thirty, meetings adjourned.
Thank you all. Jen, I'll touch base with you.